Here we go. As you heard, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town website. For folks to watch or re-watch later. There's also a live transcript for anybody that wants to follow along that way. There is a way to hide the subtitles by clicking the the more three dots down at the bottom right if you if you do not wish to see the live transcript. I'm going to ask that folks that are just watching. I'm going to turn off videos. It helps keep the the quality of the recording. Better for us when when that gets posted. And if you have any questions. I am enabling folks to send me a message in in the chats. So you can message me directly through the chat. And last but not least, if we get interrupted, we'll we'll end the meeting and we'll we'll send out a new link for folks to to rejoin and we'll we'll start it up again in a way that allows us to carry on without disruption.
Okay, thank you. So I note that the council president isn't here and we're trying to get in touch with them. But the purpose of the meeting tonight is to discuss the recommendations. Most particularly, the legislative recommendations of the Stormwater Management Study Committee. So I guess at this point. Do I should I turn it over to the town attorney?
That's fine. Yeah, I I wrote down a I wrote down a list of, I think there's. By my count, there's about sixteen recommendations, some of which are related to code changes, which I think, as you said, Mr. Mayor, is the focus tonight. Some of it is administrative. So I could I could introduce what the recommendations were if you'd like, and then turn it over to the council and town attorney for advice on whether and how to move forward with that for code code changes.
Okay, wait, is that something you're prepared to do, Mr. Town Attorney? So
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Good. No, no, you go ahead.
I understood that tonight's meeting was presentation by the committee on edits to the stormwater drainage code. Am I mistaken?
I don't think the committee is presenting tonight. This is more discussion of councils reactions to the the recommendations, initial reactions as we think about changes to the code.
And I think some of the purpose of the meeting was to get clarification from you, Mr. Town Attorney, on the how the recommendations could be applied to the code and the different options. And and I think it's Council Bar stated that it's it's for a discussion. And then to make a decision on on how to move forward.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to address those questions.
So perhaps
Run through the recommendations.
Perhaps for the record, Matt can run through. Is that okay with the council? I guess I'll continue to chair the meeting until the the president arrives. But to refresh everyone's memory, let's have Matt go over all the recommendations and then we could go one by one with the discussion and some legal interpretation by by the town attorney.
Yeah, sure. And so I actually just sent around as well for folks to for the to the council, the mayor and to the town attorney. I I sent sent around my notes for you. But if you'd like, I can share my screen that showed that just goes through the recommendations this way. The first is is one that has already been put into the town code. And I in in most of these to to the best that I could, I I tried to to actually copy and paste what was written verbatim in the committee's reports. So the first is that storage is provided for a one-year storm event for new construction. And I I just made the note that this this code provision has already been adopted, but may be worth revisiting if if for no other reason, because at the time of its adoption, the council was considering it as some something of an interim proposal and that they may add on to it later or finesse it as time went by. And going along with that, the committee recommended that new code provisions should be added that clarifies some things that the town should should look at. So one is clarifying that storage with full onsite infiltration. And if that's not available, storage with onsite infiltration and delayed release of stored water that does not infiltrate. And that may ring some bells because we actually did have an instance where this was essentially what was brought before the council. And then more more generically, if there are any other approaches that the council wanted to consider adding to the code for increasing increasing stormwater mitigation through conservation landscaping or planting trees, using using greenery essentially to to help offset stormwater. I'm happy. I don't know how you how you prefer. You'd rather have me run through them first or just talk talk through them one one by one.
What what's the pleasure of the council? Council and Bar, what do you what do you think?
I think we maybe we can go quickly through all of them. So we get to see what the whole framework is like, and then we can go through them in detail.
Sure, sure. Okay, so the second is the other major code renovation code revision change that the committee recommended is is number two there. So for existing homes and properties that are that are doing a project where they add one hundred fifty square feet or more of new impervious surface or a combination of surfaces. Essentially, that they, I guess I didn't write this down correctly, but in essence, that there should be a net zero addition to stormwater runoff for for additions of one hundred fifty square feet or more. Number three, similar 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 to number one, we've already added a code provision that requires permeable driveways for new construction. This is recommending that we expand that and require permeable driveways in all replacements of driveways moving forward. And the committee does say if site conditions are favorable. Because as as we've seen, the county's regulations at least do not do not recommend and do not count permeable driveways towards stormwater mitigation if certain site conditions aren't met. For example, if there's too great a slope or the soil doesn't perk. The committee recommended against the approval of any variance for a design incorporating a pool. So in other words, if if they are, if if a an applicant is requesting a stormwater variance, that they are not allowed to install a pool on on their property. Number five was that variance funds for stormwater, the earmarked specifically for stormwater and flooding mitigation. So these these start to lend more towards administrative elements, but that would that would perhaps be addressed when the town does its budgeting, which is adopted by ordinance. When the town is putting together. I'll just take a quick step back. Part of the committee's recommendation was that the town code be slightly reorganized in a way that the stormwater provisions are are set aside on their own. And so this stormwater section of the the town code should include some some guide guidance for applicants. So stating criteria for assessing the plans, etc. When we are issuing approval of any project that requires stormwater mitigation, the committee was recommending that a maintenance agreement be part of that permitting process. And I noted that this is standard practice and and was done at our most recent stormwater variance decision. Also noting just that it it will have an added cost to have the town attorney write these maintenance agreements as well. And then as regular maintenance, the committee number eight here recommended that the town conduct annual inspections of stormwater devices at at the owner's expense. So that would similarly, I think, be included in in the maintenance agreement. This number nine, the committee is recommending that stormwater review actually be done by a separate body from the town council. So they they in in this one, they they cited the town of Chevy Chase, which has a water board that reviews stormwater variances. Number ten. The committee recommended that for new construction projects, the applicants must or ought to seek a permit from the town before a permit is sought from the county. I just made a note for myself here from if and when we get get to that one. I didn't know if that would require a code amendment as the code right now does lay out a county permit as one of the requirements for submitting a a town building permit. Number eleven. This is, again, already included in the town code that a pre-construction information meeting is required before submitting a final permit application. Number twelve. The applicants should for new home construction, or excuse me, for any any permit that requires stormwater element to it, that the applicants submit at least four soil analyses or perk tests as well as an arborist assessment for trees and and shrubs on on the lot. Number thirteen was after a year that the town asked the the staff to do a formal memo and review of the stormstormwater code as adopted and and submit any recommendations for improvement. Number fourteen was that the town should request from the Maryland Department of Environment form formally request that the Maryland Department of Environment approve uses for the state of Maryland that are currently not in the Maryland Stormwater Design Manual, but might be found in some of our nearby jurisdictions. Number fifteen was that the town prominently posts a list of recommended trees and the reason for planting them. I I thought maybe this meant on the town website, but I wasn't entirely sure on that. And there may be other options. And then finally, once, once a year, we allow residents to request to plant a tree on their property free of charge. So the town provides them a tree. I didn't get into the subsidy program because I thought that that was more an administrative thing that didn't necessarily invite involve code changes. But that that was the list. I have some other notes that perhaps things to think about while we consider those. But that was the full list. I I defer to you on how you want to move forward. You want to go back to the beginning and take take them on one by one.
So either Debbie or Shannon, did any particular recommendations leap out at you as ones you've got questions about?
I I wanted to say no is the answer that your question. But if I could add, I just wonder if we can kind of look at this as we do the consent agenda. Are there anything? Are there any things here that are just so obvious that we're all going to go, oh, yeah, of course. So then we could whittle down the list and then talk about more the the things that are more difficult or, you know, or we don't agree on or whatever. How does that sound?
That sounds good. But before you do that, you might want to have the town attorney's input in the legalities of each one of these and whether they are achievable or what the problems could be.
What's for me?
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yep. I think number seven would be one of those properly on a consent agenda, the requiring of a written maintenance agreement, which we included as a condition of approval with the last variance decision. And I think that's a simple code amendment. And because the council already agreed with respect to the last variance hearing that it was a good idea, then we should go ahead and amend the the code to include that. Perhaps to aid the discussion in in the rest of the items, with respect to number one, I think a discussion there is pertinent to deciding how we go forward with respect to any code amendments. And I think as we also experienced with the last variance decision. There's a difference between retention of stormwater and treatment of stormwater. You know, retention might mean you've got to capture the water and use it on site. Treatment might mean under the Maryland Design Manual, just capturing the water temporarily and doing some with it before it reenters the water supply, slowing it down, for example. And based on the the last hearing, which involved clay soil, which was presented as an obstacle to retention, but even even taking the clay soil out of the picture. I did have a question whether from a, you know, engineering basis, and Doug can help us here. Whether it's really possible to capture and infiltrate all the runoff from a roof for a one-year storm event is as we saw in the last case. That would would have taken, for example, some forty-plus rain barrels. And so I I think we we might need to talk about what is it that we really want to achieve? And if it's retention and drainage on site, then what is the figure, the amount that's that's feasible? Matt's presented, you know, a nice compromise here. You could have infiltration and then what infiltration is not possible, then you you switch to treatment. But I I think we need to we need to clarify what's desired and then talk about how to achieve it. You know, right now, I think reliance on the M D E Design Manual suggests treatment and not necessarily retention on site. Another option would be, and I'm sure the committee is aware, doing something like the town of Chevy Chase does, where they say you don't have to capture your entire roof and drain it on site, infiltrate it on site, but just capture and infiltrate on site the amount that results from new impervious surface. So if you're, you know, tearing down a house that's X square feet larger than the old house, you just have to capture and retain that X, which may or may not be more, you know, scientifically feasible. Other than that, you know, I I think the other the other items are are you know, fairly doable. Some of them require just policy decisions. I'll let the council chew on that while I go through the list again and see if there's any others that are no brainers that we could add to the consent list like number seven, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor.
If if I may, I'm going to offer a somewhat varied hierarchy, I'll call it, of methods that could be used. But before I get there, the the particular example we had on Trent Street, that was about as bad as conditions could be in Somerset. It was completely clay soil, which is not characteristic of the majority of properties in Somerset. It was on a steep hill. Some of our homes are on steep hills, others are not. And those two factors really limited what could be done in terms of mitigating the stormwater runoff. So one answer to what you were saying there, Ron, is that our homes differ. They're a lot the lots differ, and some are more able to capture runoff than others. That's that's what it boils down to. But moving on to why I'm talking about a hierarchy, if if you go from the top of the hierarchy is landscape design, in other words, conservation landscaping, rain gardens, bio swales. First of all, do that to, and the term is the maximum extent practical M E P. It's E S D to the M E P is what I'm talking about here. That that's if you could do everything that way, that would be fantastic, wonderful, marvelous, but you probably can't. So if you can't go down to the next level, which is structural, and that's dry wells particularly. And they're still absorbing water and holding it on the site. And so that's good. They're not generating anything. They're not growing and therefore capturing more water later on. They're not as good as environmental site design, but they still do the job. So that's good. Do that to the maximum extent practical and then go down a level if you still haven't captured it all to the third level, which is treatment, as Ron is calling it, which is cisterns, rain tanks, which is temporarily holding the water before releasing it. So you've actually got a hierarchy. And we set it up that way to be that hierarchy. Reason why we do that is it's easier for the builders to put in rain tanks and nothing else, because they can then get more stuff on the site that way. And we want to make sure that they can do better than rain tanks most of the time.
Well, I think that dry wells are part of the solution in Montgomery County. I mean, that's that's the top part that you were talking about. I mean,
Actually, I called it the middle part.
But I mean, that that satisfies the M D P E S D, what you know, whatever that is, like dry wells is a big component of that for Montgomery County.
Well, they they favor environmental site design, believe it or not, too. The problem is that it the way they handle it. The very few rain gardens are approved. They don't give much credit to conservation landscaping, so most of their requirements end up being dry wells.
Right, like that's like, I feel like the go-to thing that people do is like
Yes.
Which is number two on your tier.
Right.
So
It's really number two in their tier, too, actually.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I have just a couple of thoughts on it in general, which is number one. I do believe that a lot of our land is clay and a good portion of it. And especially at the parts, the parts of it that have bad runoff. So I do think that that is an important factor. But I would say that you know, I I would say that in general, I believe that the house that's already standing there is already doing, you know, whatever it's doing with the water. And so I would be in favor of limiting the water or trying to capture the water from the additional impervious design that is done to the existing house. Like, for example, if you have a house, you know, that's the the mid-century modern houses and they're one level. If you just simply raise the story and add on a second story to that house, I don't know, and you stay within that same footprint, I'm not sure that you would have to then go back and do all of the water mitigation from from that house design.
You don't. You don't.
Why shouldn't you have to?
If you're Because you're just taking that additional. So that's what I'm saying, like, as a compromise for this, I feel like whatever the house that is existing on the land, we need to protect the additional that's coming from it. So like, what's happening is these houses are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And so it's just creating the big runoff for everyone. So we want to, we want to be acknowledged, like this house on Trent, for example, already had all of those issues that they had with their house as is, with the footprint that they have. So, you know, for to now make them to kind of, you know, double back down in order to secure all of the runoff from that house, I think is too challenging with the soils and the space that we have. And so I would be more in favor of, you know, so you take that footprint of the house and then they want to add on, you know, two thousand more square feet into the yard. That's like the part that we have to make sure that that is captured. You know, in the various ways.
The problem with that is that if you just look at our current houses without any new building, we're not doing very well. We have a lot of flooding at the moment. And we've got, you know, creek problems, sixteen feet of erosion that we had. It 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 really, we are really not doing very well. And so if we just say that is the standard, we're not going to improve upon that standard unless we expect our new houses to do better than our current houses. And unless also in our current houses, we improve the way we're handling water. This is two different things that we've got to do. Otherwise, we're going to continue to have the problems we're having, and they are going to be worse because the, you know, we're getting more rain and more intense rain over the next few years than we've had previously. So I don't think that we should just hold it to the additional impervious area. The whole culture changed around 2010 from pushing water away, which is where our older houses were built, and that's what they were doing, to keeping water on site post 2010. So we should apply that new culture to these new homes as they're built. But we only do it when there is additional impervious surface being created. And that that your point earlier about the additional story on a house, in fact, no, if 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 there is no additional impervious surface, if you're just putting another story on a house, there's no need for a settlement plan. Neither the county nor the town is going to actually ask for that in in review.
Right, but but then you know, I mean, I I mean, I guess that it can be too bold then because like, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think that a new house, I mean, sometimes they they're not going to be able to do anything. And so like, we're basically shutting down any like, well, I guess two things. Number one, none of the houses that are going up are the same footprint in size. They're dramatically increased. So if we then say that you could add on within the, you know, within the original footprint, you know, that you know, that's an incentive to keep these houses not to the brink of these lots. Number one. And then, you know, in addition to it, then, I mean, it basically says, like, I'm just not sure what these people are gonna do who are, you know, building these, gonna tear down these houses and build new houses. I don't, I mean, we're gonna basically say that we don't want any new houses. You know, I guess I think it's too hard to accommodate all of the the water runoff that the original house had as well.
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, think of it as a four part character. The fourth part is if you can't manage all of the runoff after the three different routes are applied, then you seek a variance and then you pay money. I've done that in the stormwater recommendations depending upon the amount of number of gallons that you haven't captured, which goes to a stormwater fund, which then leads to improvements elsewhere in the town is the
I mean, it just gets into the whole waiver system that Montgomery County is doing. And so then it becomes, you know, I don't know, I guess I I haven't really gathered my thoughts on it, but I mean, for for someone to pay a waiver of $500 or whatever it might be, you know, that's not just as a simple variance, like, you know, my hands are tied, I can't do it anymore.
The, I mean, we choose the amount of the waiver. So, and I would not be in favor of a $500 waiver, let me tell you. What the Stormwater Committee recommended, their pricing, and it's in there. It would be $20,000 if it was a full waiver of the 2.6 inches on an average lot. So it can be quite substantial is the point.
I have, if I can jump in and just add some, add some thoughts. Some of this is echoing what some of you have said. I do, I do think as Councilmember Rovac brought up that the if, if and when soils don't perk, that does create a significant complicating issue. Because even if the even if the goal is to maintain at current levels, which I'm not sure that that's what what we want to do or not. There's, there's limited ways to actually do storage on site if if the soils won't take water. And and as as Councilmember Rovac is intimately familiar with, part of the problem, too, is when the when the size of the buildings is increasing, it we're still only talking about that first 2.6 inches. So if if the impervious surface level is increasing a lot, it maybe there's a way to mitigate for the first 2.6 inches, but once you get beyond that, that's where you get exacerbated flooding. And so that was part of my thinking in terms of whether there was some way to trigger, you know, if if soils don't perk, then there's a new there's a, there's an impervious or a non vegetative surface limit to that or some something like that because I and maybe, maybe, maybe the Trent Street property is a true anomaly. I don't know. I don't know what the soil composition is throughout town. In in talking to Doug and maybe he is here with us. Doug, I think, did do a little bit of research on this, and there is a lot of clay soils in Somerset. And so part of the complicating factor with, you know, a flat fee for a 100% waiver is it's the same, even if the person said, well, okay, I will, I'll shrink my house to half the size. It's still a $20,000 waiver because they're gonna need a 100% waiver on it. So I, those, those are some of the thoughts that were in my mind. I think that part of, part of the issue, I guess, to sum it up, because I want to turn it back over to you, so I apologize. But part of the issue I think that is not addressed here is massing. And I think that that's very much tied into flooding, which is we talk about stormwater management, but a lot of it is really flooding issues in town. And it, that's that those terms are sometimes used synonymously, but they they're not always the exact same thing.
Okay, I, before we go on, I do want to acknowledge that our council president is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I mean, a couple, couple of things, Matt, we don't want to at the moment, anyway, go beyond what's in the stormwater recommendations with other ideas like you're suggesting. I mean, the ideas may be good, but I think we've got to deal with what we've got in the report as our starting point right now. And if we think that's inadequate, then by all means bring something else up. On clay soils, part of the frustration the committee had was that there are a couple of new strategies available that are not yet in the design manual of the Maryland Stormwater Manual. And it is out of date. One issue is a system, E I W G, where relatively simple to install in a clay soil, where you actually by putting plastic in underneath the soil at a simple level, make the soil much more permeable. And that's already in use at airports, where they have flooding problems. It is gradually coming in. But again, that that is too new to be in our 2010 stormwater manual. The other approach that's being used is some of the damage that happens in our properties comes from construction compacting of when when they are building the home, making the soil particularly a mess. And so one way to handle that is to require that they treat the soil at the time they're building. And again, Arlington County does that. But again, it's not something we should really introduce just now. We should instead work with the state of Maryland and see if they can incorporate it in the design manual because we do want to follow our own state's design manual when we are building this code. So I'll stop there.
But that, but that is something, Mr. Town Attorney, that the town could, has the authority to do, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're not, we're not limited to the Maryland Design Manual.
We could. Yeah, I mean, it's just that we have to get our own engineering expertise and help. I mean, for example, I don't know whether the one where you treat the soil is works on hills, whether it only works on flat land. We need to get engineers in to advise us. That's what Maryland has when they when they develop the sign man.
Well, if I may, Councilmember Barr, let me try and and phrase the question again, or in a different way that we need to address. And to simplify it, I think it's basically how can we do something better than the county? The county is, you know, essentially applying E S D to the M E P. But those results have not been adequate from our viewpoint. So we need to require something beyond what the county is requiring in the county's interpretation of the Maryland Design Manual. And I'm trying to work that into the hierarchy approach that you suggest because I I agree with you. I think that's, I think that's the way to go. So maybe the council could discuss, you know, how do you, how do we flesh that out a little bit? And I'm thinking, just as an example, what if the code were to provide? You've got to retain and infiltrate on site runoff that results from new impervious surface. But as Councilmember Barr noted, that doesn't do enough to address the problems in the town because maintaining the status quo isn't really a success. So then in addition to infiltrating the new impervious surface, you also have to reduce the existing runoff by X percent. So that raises your retention requirement by a certain amount. And then after that, we go to E S D to the M E P. As I'm just trying, I'm struggling with trying to adopt some substantive criteria that is above and beyond what the county is doing. Because we don't want to just repeat an E S D to the M E P analysis, if that makes sense.
Ron, did we already discuss benchmarking it to the previous runoff or the preexisting runoff, which is what came up in the last case is sort of saying, don't make it worse. Did we go through that? In your summary now, you didn't phrase it that way. So I'm wondering if.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's similar to the suggestion I just made, but instead of saying, don't make it worse, I'm actually saying, make it better by, you know, X percent reduction because maintaining the status quo is going to solve the problems in the town.
And then the question is, how do we define the X percentage?
Right. And I, based on my experience in the town of Chevy Chase, and I'm not a stormwater drainage engineer, but I have seen stormwater drainage engineers addressing this type of goal with volume, cubic volume retention requirements, similar to what the town of Somerset, you know, code does. But for example, if if we calculate, you know, existing runoff from a one year storm event for the current house, you know, results in a certain volume of water, then you've got to reduce that runoff by X percent, whatever we, whatever we would come up with in addition to capturing and infiltrating on site, the runoff from any new impervious surface. And then after that, also do what the county is requiring, E S D to the M E P for any other volume.
I mean, I feel like, you know, when the house next door to me was being built, like, they had that calculation very set up. You know, it was, it was basically like, you know, you are now going to be producing this much water. You can account for this much water. So there's a 50% runoff that they got this waiver for. And and so they didn't have to cover that 50%. But like, I feel like on some of these other ones that we've seen, I haven't seen it from Montgomery County as spelled out as it was on the one that I saw, like, for example, the houses that are on Cumberland, the two houses that are being built at the top of Wisconsin. Those houses, like, they weren't going to do anything. They had no, you know, they couldn't do anything and it's just all gonna run off. But there was never really that calculation that was set forward that was like, you know, this is going to produce X amount of cubic feet of runoff. I didn't really see any of that. So I don't know if it's a standard practice that Montgomery County sets it up like that or how we would get those figures. I mean, I guess it would come from an engineer. But, you know, how do we get those figures so that we can at least start to look at that? Because we're not civil engineers. You know, how do we then look at it when we're going forward so that we understand how much runoff we're really talking about? And, you know, what they're able to capture?
Matt, would you give us that formula again, Matt?
Or Doug might be able to.
Yeah. Matt came up with it before. That's why I asked Matt, but yeah, Doug probably knows too.
Yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
No, that's okay. Just give me, give me, give me a minute.
We don't even need to know the formula, but I guess it would just be, it would be nice that, you know, when we're looking at these houses going forward, like if we all use like a standard calculation of like what it is that we're talking about in terms of like this runoff. You know, obviously, all lots are not the same. And, you know, there's going to be other houses like that one on Trent that are going to be challenging.
Yeah, as I understand the county formula, and I'll give you a qualitatively, and Doug will probably give you a quantitatively much better. What the county is doing is looking at the permeability of the soil. And if the soil is fully permeable, which I think is a 5.52 standard per inch, then you don't get any waiver from that. So you've then got to manage all of the water up to the level that they they say. But if the soil is not fully permeable, then you get that discounted. You get a 50% waiver if it's not, you know, if it's not fully permeable, then you've only got to manage less runoff because the soil is not fully permeable. That's, that's how it operates. We are different from that. We are saying regardless of the quality of the soil, we're expecting you to move to control 2.6 inches of rain. And that, that is an important difference.
Yes, and a simpler way to do it, in my opinion. You don't have to get into, as Councilmember Barr said, curve numbers of different surfaces and how water is going to infiltrate. And so that was my suggestion that we continue to apply a simple formula just based on square footage of the roof surface. So we know what the roof surface was before and what's proposed after, and then we can calculate what additional runoff is is being created. And also, you know, what additional savings we would want to improve things rather than just maintaining the status quo.
Roof surface or all impervious?
Exactly.
Well, right now, it's, right now, the code is roof surface, but yeah, it certainly could be expanded and thank you very much for that question because I did want to address something else that Matt stated that I think is an excellent idea. The council is also going to be holding a work session on building regulations. And if some other communities have found it helpful to think of stormwater drainage holistically in the code. So it's not just adopting a drainage requirement, a retention requirement. It's also thinking about the mass and scale of buildings, lot coverage, impervious surface coverage, non vegetative surface coverage, you know, all those requirements together can operate to improve drainage in the town.
And so maybe that's the answer is to look at it holistically like that because maybe if we cut back our town code to say you can't have X amount of impervious surface, you know, that's going to, you know, help this situation probably as well if we start to limit kind of maybe more of the size and scope of these homes.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest contributor to runoff is the roof. I mean, there is.
Yeah, but I mean, patios and driveways and extra garages and sheds and all of that stuff is all based on like how much imperviousness is like on a lot or not a lot. So it's not just the house.
Sure, they do contribute to, and and we can have the total impervious surface as our number, but you know, the roof is the biggest, biggest number.
But I mean, you know, the patios and the driveways are take up, you know, all sorts of land that is not, you know, then being eaten up by anything. So.
Reducing the house size is a different question. I think just if we were going to calculate runoff, we have to look at all impervious because then we wouldn't be calculating all runoff. So you know, I think that's just a given. I don't think that leads to necessarily saying less house. But whatever the house is, we have to look at runoff in a holistic sense for sure. Otherwise, we will be, right?
Yeah, the complication the committee got into in doing that was that size of lot makes a difference. So, in other words, if you've got 1,000 square feet of impervious surface in a 5,000 square foot lot, then you've only got 4,000 square feet to recover the water from. But if it's an 8,000 foot lot, you've got an awful lot more space to recover the water from. And so do you punish people for smaller lots is where it comes down to there. And that's where the committee had problems and they said we shouldn't punish people for smaller lots. So we shouldn't go that way. And that was their decision not to do that at that point.
I mean, it's all even, you know, I mean, you have whatever you have for your lot size. So, yeah, I mean, it makes it harder for people who have smaller lots. But it doesn't change like the runoff, you know, the imperviousness of that lot. I mean, it's still going to make you have to have a smaller sized house and maybe you don't put in a garage in the back or something.
Less impervious surface. Let less impervious surface.
I think using the word punish is, is ridiculous. You know, you, as Shannon said, you have the lot you have. You bought the house, you know what you were buying. And then when you want to go and renovate it, then you have to take a, take stock of what you got and what makes sense.
I would, I would, if we, if, I mean, if, if several hours of the council feel that way, I'd encourage, uh, the stormwater committee. To talk to the councils to give their thinking clearly. I'm probably not the best voice to, to give that thinking.
That would always be welcomed. I, I think I understood, Robin, it's not necessarily punished, but inadvertently punitive.
Yes.
You know, I think that's what you were, you know, there is the potential of, you know. You have a bigger house, bigger lot, there's more you can do. And, and I think we need to just be cognizant of that. I don't think the answer is automatically. Make a smaller house. At least I struggle with that. You know, um, but. I think this, uh, the, the other element here is that, is that that's why we have a variance process. Right? And I think as much as it was painful, the, the last hearing. And it was painful. It was such, it was probably an ideal case for variance. Or a variance process rather, in given the unusual nature of that lot. So, you know, after all the changes we make to the code, I think we doesn't, we don't sort of free ourselves from. Peculiar circumstances where we would need to apply variance process, I think.
Yeah. Um, it, I, I want to move on from this particular discussion that, you know, I don't think we're going to resolve. All we're going to do is bring up the issues just now, uh, to number two. Our current code only refers to new construction. So number two is necessary. That is, it would apply to renovations too.
Sorry to interrupt. Just before we move on, I just want to flag that. Earlier when Ron was saying percentage reduction. You know, I, I, I think we really, we, we want to ground that as much as possible in. I would be, I would struggle if it was an arbitrary number. And I think we would open ourselves up to a lot of questioning. And it has to be at a bare minimum benchmark with what might be happening at neighboring towns or. It, it needs to be grounded in something, basically. I, I don't think we can simply say 20%, 15%, whatever. I think we need it to be grounded in, in something.
And the committee was doing that. That's a 2.6 inch standard is what, what they grounded it in.
Um, no, won't be saying something about percentage reduction.
But no, that, 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 that arose from the discussion of, no, we can't. Hold them to the standard of no more than the current homes. Because the current homes are not doing a good enough job. They're not doing a good enough job. So therefore they have to go below that. And, and, and Ron said, well, some percentage below that.
Yes, and that's fine, but I'm just saying how we define that percentage.
Right, well, it said, the, 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 the committee went another way. They said. Um, instead, they, they said the 2.6 inches is the standard. And we're not giving you any exceptions for the quality of the soil. Um, you've got to manage it with the 2.6 inches. That was their, their call. That was how they did it.
So this remains unres- an open question.
However, how we do, how we do that is an open question on the side of we, you know, I, I want us to cover all the recommendations side. So we get to where we are.
Go to the next one. Fine, sounds good.
So the, the number two is saying is we, at the moment, our code only applies to new. Construction that we have to apply to renovations too. Cause if we don't do that, we're going to get people coming in with, I'm going to retain one brick, one brick. Therefore this is a renovation and get, get through everything. So, um, what the committee said is they're saying. An increase of, of, of 150 square feet or no, or more would be the standard to bring in the rolls. Um. And they chose the 150 square feet because it is about the, the amount of water that would flood a basement. Um, so it's, it is a troublesome volume of water. Um, to manage, uh, and that, so that was their justification for that standard. Um, they looked at other communities, other communities are all over the map in terms of what they use here.
But 150 square foot could be a small scale. Renovation, right?
It, it, they, they give an example, uh, it's like a 150 square foot patio is a sort of average patio, um, driveway.
If I keep the house footprint the same and I add 150 square foot patio. Then I'm subject to the stormwater code.
Right, you are, yes, at that point. Um. And.
I don't know, I, I, I would love more.
Are, are you sure?
Recommendation.
I, the, um, I thought, I believe. That is in the code, that, that is in the stormwater recommendation. I mean, it's not in our code at the moment. That is in the recommendation for, for it.
Okay, because, because we don't even look at the patio right now.
Yeah, it, it is. Yeah, they, they did make a distinction between the new, the new construction. And for the renovations, they say 150 square feet of impervious surface. So it's not.
Right, and if there's any impervious, so if you're putting in a driveway, that's impervious because it's on slope, then that would count too.
I, I wonder if there's a way to define major renovation. Other than go about it this way. Because you, you, you're right in observing, Robin. That there, there are interventions where, you know, most of the house is redone. Um, without it being a tear down. So how, how do we define major renovation?
Because this. I think that's a question for Ron.
Yeah.
Ron, how could the code be defined in that way?
I would, I would. Two, two possibilities come to mind. Anything over X square feet is considered a major renovation. Or anything that increases the current square footage. By more than X percent is a major renovation. Those would be two ways that come to mind. Similar to how some jurisdictions quantify the building permit fee. It's, it's based on the square footage of the addition that's being built.
What was the first one, Ron?
Well, that is square footage is what he said.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's basically what the committee is proposing, I think. They came up with, you know, 150 square foot threshold.
No, we, I mean, we could say 300 or whatever, and we don't have to step with 150 square feet. It's just that's what their recommendation is.
Exactly. And then, and then the other option I suggested was. You, you work with percentages, you know, the increase of your addition with respect to. Either floor area or footprint. Those are two different things, you know, footprint is just like the satellite view. Floor area can be over several levels.
I think floor area is getting closer to major renovation. Because you could have a house that's all good and every way, and the person just does. You know, adds, you know, improves their patio situation, and then they would be subject to. The new stormwater code. I'm not sure if that's the intent of the committee. And you, and then we are not yet capturing a major renovation.
I mean, the, the, what they were saying is that. You should zero out the runoff from the new, um. Impervious surface. They're not applying the whole code to you at that point. Um, sorry.
But if, if I build a house and I don't add square footage, but I rapidly expand floor coverage. Then that's okay.
Um, it, it, as long as you don't require a sediment control permit, yes. But I mean, if you go over 400 square feet, you do require a sediment control permit.
On a, on floor coverage?
Yeah.
I think we need to figure out what the definition, your exact definition is. This requires maybe another round.
So the county has, has a rule on. The county defines what counts as a new construction. Or an infill construction in our R60 subdivisions. And I can't recall off the top of my head, but perhaps Doug or Ron can reference that.
Um, yeah. Infill basically means new construction. And the rule used to be, and Doug can correct me if it's changed, that if you're, if you're building a new house. Then it's infill development. And you're allowed to retain only. Two, I'm sorry, yeah, two, two walls, two exterior walls, I believe. In order, no, 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 if you want to say it's an addition, you have to at least maintain two exterior walls. But if you're tearing down the whole house, it's infill development. Is that right, Doug? Is it, that, that's still the rule?
Yeah, it's still the rule. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
And not a great rule, because as I understand, there's been situations where, you know, existing walls have been propped up by. You know, two by fours, just to. You argue that these walls are remaining when they're really not remaining in the structural sense. Maybe I vaguely recall one situation where, you know, the wall actually fell down in, in the wind. And then the county was faced with the question whether that wall remains.
If a trap wall falls down and nobody's there to see it. Um, okay, so, and, and anyway, basically, it, it, I mean, we could go percentage, but is it question just of square footage? Do we agree with 150? Do we want to have a higher level, whatever? That's, that's what number two is about. Um, number three, um, one thing I want to draw your attention to here with permeable driveways. Is the, if, if site conditions are favorable, because the way we wrote it into our code, we did not mention it's like conditions are favorable in our original code. We should do that, um, because permeable driveways don't work very well when they're on a 5% slope or if the soil doesn't perk. Um, so we should, um, build those conditions into the code that is the interim code that we have at the moment. Um. What about swimming pools? Are we on that?
What's the background to the swimming pool recommendation?
Uh, it's swimming, swimming pools and their, and their decks take out a lot of the, uh, square footage of the lot. From any other intervention like drywells, um, for example, or rain gardens or whatever you want to put in.
Yeah.
Block it.
I think that, um, I think that that makes sense that. If they can't control their water, they can't have a pool.
Not only that, what happens when they have to empty the pool?
You know, where's the. I don't think it's as much water, but like there's a weird pool thing with like Montgomery County, like. Or, you know, people will get into arguments about if it is really impervious or pervious. There's, there's something odd there. I don't know what it is, but, um, but. Yeah, I think that. I think that with these lots and, you know, with the size of the houses that are going on to them and then wanting a pool on top of it. It seems pretty excessive.
Okay, so it basically. There, there is no variance required is what the committee is saying. No variance allowed. It's a building a pool. In other words, they have to capture all the water.
Well, let me, let me ask this question. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, maybe you are going to address this. I was just going to bring up that currently we don't regulate pools in our town code. And I don't. Doug, uh, does the, how does the, I don't, I don't know exactly how the county. Regulates pools either. We do regulate, you know, the fencing around a pool, I guess. So inadvertently we, in a roundabout way, sort of do. Um, but yeah, it was, it was sort of a question for you, Ron. Since we currently don't regulate pools and what. Uh, it, it might turn into a little bit more of a extensive code amendment to. Try to massage this language in, into there.
Yes, um, and I'm, and I'm thinking about it from a slightly different perspective. Generally speaking, of the need for a variance cannot be self-created. You can't create your own hardship and then ask for a variance. So, for example, there, there has been litigation in the county. Where a court has found. You can't build on your property, a swimming pool. Um, patio, et cetera, and then come in for a variance. From setback requirements for your proposed detached garage because you've filled your lot with other improvements. You can't argue, well, there's no space in my lot to build, so I need a variance for my garage. So with, with this, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to fit. This proposal within, in the general legal principles with respect to why variances can and can't be granted. So variances are supposed to address hardship situations where there's something presented by the property that makes complying with the code. Difficult. So are we saying if you're putting in a pool? Then you're taking away space. That you could use for an infiltration device, a rain tank. Then I think it makes sense. But if someone's putting in a swimming pool in clay soil where an infiltration device isn't going to work. Then it might not be fair just to have a, you know, a blanket rule that says if you build a pool, you can't get a variance. I still think the council probably needs to take into consideration all the special conditions of the property.
So, so one thing I want to say about pools is that, you know, uh, because of. The climate here and because of our, um. Public pool, there have not been a lot of applications in my 20 years. Where, where the property has included, where the application has included a pool. Now, um, I think an issue that came up in several of, of these applications where there was a pool was. The, the issue of whether or not it, it was a hardship to not have a pool. Isn't that right? Mr. Town Attorney. And, and so since there's no definition of that, I think that's something that needs to be clarified. You know, whether or not we think it's a hardship to not be able to have a pool. And that's like a policy decision, right?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, and also a legal one. In Montgomery County versus Rotwine case. That was. Litigated up to the court of special appeals. The court there found that the applicant's desire to build a covered breezeway. Between her detached garage and her house to protect her from the elements. Was for convenience and not any compelling reason to, you know, address a hardship of the property. So I think that relates directly to the mayor's point as to whether, you know, a pool is a, is a convenience or a necessity with respect to a variance request.
And since it's not spelled out in our law, then it's difficult. For the council to apply it and because it's so rare, becomes a problem when it does occur.
So we, we may, we may walk this recommendation back then and say, perhaps if we get more pool, uh, in applications, we need to do something about pools. It's what, is that what?
I, I think that pools definitely made a comeback in COVID. And, um, houses with pools sold faster than other houses and the house next door to me got approved for a pool. And, um, you know, all of that. So I do think they are a little bit more in style these days. Um, and I think that it goes back to the general. You know, question about like how much impervious perviousness you can have on a lot. And so that's going to impact like a pool choice, like, you know, if we cut back on what is allowed on these lots. Um, and, you know, then people have to make their own decisions. It's not up to us to say you can't have a pool or you can't have a patio or you can't have like, you know, a giant, uh, you know, a movie theater. Um, but people will have to make choices for themselves as to what is more important for them in order to, you know, fit it all in the lot sizes that they have.
I tend to agree with that. I mean.
Right.
We focus our energies on the stormwater mitigation. And the outcome there and how they get there. You know, you don't focus our energies on that front. And so. Although it sounds like the mayor wants a separate working session on pools, so I'm all.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying. I'm not saying. The, all these, you know, this is just the first discussion of these, of these very. Um, well-thought recommendations, but the. It, they're not going to be, it, it's not going to be possible to just. it, they're not going to be, it, it's not going to be possible to just pass them all overnight, you know? A lot of input and thought is required.
I mean, the only, the only thing I'm coming up with is, I mean, we've also had, um, outdoor kitchens come up. And are outdoor kitchens in this way any different from pools?
I, it's all, it's all, you know, you've got a 10,000 square foot lot and what you do with it, you know, i- i- you could have an outdoor kitchen, you can have patios, you can try to put in a tennis court, I think, um, I, I don't know, but
Yeah. On that, what the town has authority to regulate is set forth in the land use article of the Maryland code, which says, you know, similar to how Council Rovac was framing it for us, you can regulate the mass design setback of structures, impervious surface coverage. You, you cannot say whether or not someone can have a pool.
Oh, no, no, but
But you can say how far it has to be set back from the property or how much impervious coverage or how much footprint can be located on the lot. So that, that may be a better way to address the issue of the pool.
Yeah, right. What the committee is saying is a little bit different, which is, I'm saying we would probably equate an outdoor kitchen as far as I understand the logic. Because the pool, um, stops other kinds of intervention from happening, um, therefore um, it stops a variance. Because, um, in essence, you're, 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 you've already, um, used your chit on that, shall we say.
Yeah, sure. And that makes sense. And case law supports that. But there, there were just, I don't think it could be a blanket rule. It would be a self-created hardship if the pool was going in where a rain tank could be located.
Yeah. Absolutely. The same would apply to an outdoor kitchen, though, is what I'm trying to say.
So let me put all this in perspective a little bit. So the reason why this is all so important is because our code is vague and outdated. And we want to make it, um, more workable so that when people want to do something with their property or when they want to consider buying a house, they're, they're not going to call up the town manager and say, well, would I be able to put a pool on this property or would I be able to this or this or this? And right now, since it's so vague and so outdated, we want to solve the problems in advance, not when it comes to the council to make a decision. And there's all this conflict.
Actually, and Mr. Mayor, uh, you just, you just made me think about one of the instances that I do recall where a pool going on the property was an issue. I believe that had to do with the removal of trees. And although, although this isn't a specific recommendation that the committee laid out in their report, they, I know that they did do work on the amount of water that a fully mature, especially canopy tree does hold, and they do have some recommendations related to that. So you know, one thing the council could consider is also adding to its calculation of storm, of stormwater is adding sort of a a cubic foot of water penalty for removing healthy trees. And then that also, um, that also would serve the purpose that I think Ron was talk, talking about and Councilmember Rovac as well, which was that a pool specifically would kind of get swept up in more generally, if they're applying for a variance, the variance would have to be denied if they're putting in any type of impervious surface that would put them above the limit if that surface could be used to mitigate stormwater. And so in, in an instance where the remove, you know, you, you took out a healthy tree to put in a pool, again, that, that, that would go to that to say that's a penalty of 150 cubic feet of water. Therefore.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna add something, uh, the EIWG intervention, which is the one where you put plastic in clay soil that makes it permeable, um. That does scuttle a lot of the arguments about clay soil. Um, it also scuttles the county's argument, but that's a separate case altogether. The, the point is that, um, even clay soil can be made permeable. Um, and so the restriction in that context might make more sense generally than specific when applied to particular salt types. I'm not saying that we've got the answer there yet. I'm just saying that that also does reshape the conversation. All right. So anyway, there's things to think about with the pool, but there is some sense, um, on these discretionary, um, additions to a home that we, you don't get a free pass, um, on stormwater control with these discretionary additions.
Robin, your, this particular discussion makes me think, you know, there are updates or refinements to the code. But I think we also need sort of a framework for variance uh, decisions. We need, you know, as a council, some heuristics or some ways in which we think about variance. So I think the pool issue fits there. Where we, you know, it's, it's sort of, we have that perspective that if there's this construction taking place and and these various facilities are being put in, then potentially they are, you know, making it harder to move the stormwater requirement. And so it becomes a way in which we review the variance application. But I, I don't know whether we need the court to have this spelled out.
Again, the recommendations do talk about what, um, variance, the, the kind of criteria that you would, you, we would use to evaluate, um, variance requests. Uh, yeah, that, that's in there too. Um, and I guess that's where you put the pool thing that we would not consider uh, a variance request, um, if, if there was a pool there. Um, but it said that's still got to be sorted out and we, we really have to sort of whether we want to restrict it to only those cases where an infiltration device would work. Or do we expand it because it's possible to create soil that would allow infiltration? Um, all right, I, I guess we go on again. Um, next one is the earmarking. So this is when a variance is sought and approved, we charge them for the variance as the county does. Um, we would, um, have a higher billing of the county, um, so that a maximum variance, if they're not, um, controlling anything will be $20,000. Obviously, if it controlling 50%, it's $10,000, so.
This, I'll have to research this one, but my initial response is it's potentially problematic because Maryland law does provide that municipalities have only that revenue producing authority granted to them by the state. And with respect to permit application fees, generally, they, they can only be used to offset the cost of administering the code requirements and they can't generate revenue.
Well, we are already falling short of that.
Well, well, of course, yeah. So we, we It costs you much more than what you're collecting, but
Yeah. So, so at least let's catch up to offsetting. I think that would be reasonable.
I agree. Well, we would, Ron, would you look into that to see if it's possible for me to start a charge? And that would be a good thing to do. Um, right. Um. All right. Uh, the town should establish a stormwater code guide, compliance guide for applicants. Um, and this is for new applicants coming in or for big renovations. Um, I think we, we are some way towards that already. The Stormwater Committee has provided some help, but I do believe that is a useful tool. I can't imagine anybody else. I mean, I don't know any other reactions to that.
I think it goes on the consent list.
Probably.
I want to go back to one thing that Ron just said. Okay. So Ron, so you're saying the state doesn't give us the authority to to make those kinds of charges, but could the legislature change that?
Sure.
Make an exception? So let me remind everyone that, that uh, one of the purposes of the committee was not only to to suggest changes that we could make, it was also to advocate for changes at the county and state level. So we might want to require, you make that request to our state legislature to change the law so that we could do that.
Thank, thank you, Jeffrey. That's a great idea. But let's first of all, find out whether we can do it, which is what Ron's going to check, I think. First of all, let's see if we
Right, 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 right. But I'm just saying that if we can't, that 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 would be, you know, this is a long-term, you know, this is a work in progress always. So, and it's great that we've made such a tremendous start with the work of that committee.
By the way, to, to Jeffrey's point that this is a work in progress, I know you don't have this right now, Matt, but at some point it might be good to know what was sort of the base cost increase to the house on Trent Street on the stormwater interventions. I'm, I'm curious what the cost differential is to meet the requirements so that we don't, we have an eye on that figure as well.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can look into that and try to put, put something together.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, number seven was the one that, that even Ron said could be a consent agenda. This is the written maintenance agreement, um, for, um, homeowners.
And six as well, having a, a compliance guy.
Right. Okay. So we'll move on to eight then. Um, that time conduct annual inspections of all new construction, drywells and dance spots at the owner's expense. Um, and the issue, we might consider a system that incorporates self-inspections at the owner's expense. So, um, in other words, th- these things would do require maintenance. There's no doubt about that. Um, the county does have, I think that God has got them on a three-year maintenance schedule, except they don't have the staff to, um, do the inspections. So, uh, we don't have the staff to do the inspections either. Uh, that's something to think about, but, um, we could require that the owners hire someone to do the inspection and then give the results to the town and that would work.
What if, what if they had to hire our guy? I wouldn't want them to have to hire their guy.
Well, yes. You know, I mean, we could give them a list of qualified engineers, which they could choose from. I don't think just one person would be.
But wouldn't, could, when we look at the fees we impose, do they include the cost of maintenance? And then that could be applied to the time we buy from either a firm or in-house engineer. I'm just wondering, what's the model here? Is the model is to require maintenance and a report is submitted and a box is ticked? But the model is, you know, we, we cost out what it means to maintain and we collect fees and it becomes part of our enforcement of, of this code. I, I'm not suggesting one direction or the other. I'm just wondering what's the model here?
But I, I, right. I mean, I think the simplest model, model is one is the owner, that we require the owner to do annual inspections and give the inspections to, to the town.
And if they don't do it, we, how do we know?
Uh, with, they would, they don't do it, then there's a record, they haven't done it.
There's no record and then we penalize them.
Yeah.
I mean, but then, but, but if they're not doing it, that means the stormwater is not being maintained properly. How do we deal with the consequences of that?
Well, I think what we'd have to do is, is bring in our own engineer to do the inspection and charge the owner for the costs and also the cost of any repair that needs doing.
I feel then the latter model is probably better, right? Where we minimize hardship all along, given we have a very strong vested interest in the outcome. But we can come back to this.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Sure. Um, number nine is, um, I think we're doing this already, review of building permit application for compliance with stormwater code should be formally administered by the town manager. Oh yeah, right. But then there's the clincher with permit review handled by a body separate from the town council. So we take ourselves out of this. Um, review is what it falls down to.
So what's the committee's, uh, uh, reason for this recommendation, Robert?
Uh, the comparison was the town of Chevy Chase where they have a water board and actually Doug serves on the water board. So he can tell us about it if you want, we want to do that. So they have basically qualified stormwater engineers reviewing these permit applications on the water board. Um, uh, which means that there's expert review of them. We don't have that. And we've got Doug, Doug's own review, um, which is available to us. Um, but beyond that, uh, we rely on our own, um, varying, um, knowledge to, um.
Yeah. I mean, I think that that came up definitely for me with the house on Trent, which is that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if these like cisterns are good or bad or whatever it might be. And like, I'm not an expert on it. So I feel like that's really helpful to have like an expert, you know, consensus of, you know, hey, guys, like the, you know, they can do this or they can do more or they should do more and to take it out of our hands, I think would be great.
Um, I, I just pulled, pulled up my notes here. Um, just quickly, the committee gave three, three reasons for, for this recommendation. One, isolating decision-making from pressures creating when neighbors consider matters impinging on their, their neighbor's affairs. Two, placing review and decision-making in the hands of one or more individuals with technical qualifications that aid them in the work. And three, freeing up the council to devote time to other significant matters of general town governments. That was the rationale given by the committee.
Yeah. And I think if there's multiple people, then it's, you know, you know, it makes, it just, I mean, to me, that would be, make a lot of sense if we're able to do something like that.
Why don't we take this forward by identifying a shortlist of potential experts that could be on such a group? Because I think that would be another factor here. If we can identify actual group, we can form of experts.
Well, we'd have to pay them.
Hopefully it's not the head of the LIDC, for example, but so it'd be good to identify the right experts. You know, and I'm struggling to understand who, who that would be right now.
Well, I mean, there are a number of companies that specialize in stormwater management. So, I mean,
They would be, but they would be a vendor to us. They would be contracted to us. Is that how?
They, they could potentially be us. And that, that is what happens. I mean, the, you, you and I, um, listened to that company, uh, those company personnel, remember?
CAS.
CAS. Yes. And they, they in fact were the engineering company that did the properties on, um, Cumberland, uh, the, oh, one and oh, three, uh, forty-five, one and four, five, six, Cumberland. They did the engineering on that.
Could, could we take a baby step and contract them for next three applications to see what that looks like or something like that?
For the moment, not because they, they typically represent the applicants.
Yeah. I mean, there's a huge conflict of interest. Like now that I'm thinking through this, there's a lot of conflicts of interest there because CAS does, um, works with developers and um, you know, I, I don't know who we'd be able to find who was really impartial to not being, you know, worked over by a developer or something because, um, it's definitely an issue.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, I mean, the way we do it at the moment is we get that expertise from, 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 uh, Doug, Doug Lowmeyer, who is here with us. Um, and, um, that then serves as our technical expert coming to council, same we, same we do with the arborist. Um, what will be different is it would be a, a full board where there'd be discussion of several people, which some will be more informed devices, more expensive. Uh, we would have to pay for all of them and more difficult to put together.
But how does Chevy Chase, how do they, how do they pick that board? How's that?
They have one, one paid member and two appointed members from the community.
Oh, okay. So there you go. There you go, everybody.
All right.
But then that, so then that does put burden on neighbors, just like you're all neighbors on the council. So I, I don't, I don't know if you, how, how are we going to find people?
We have Like Julie Greenberg would be like a great person who could, um, I'm sure she loves nominating her, but, um, it would be a great person to look at somebody.
I get it.
I, you know, pre-going to the council and, you know, giving her recommendations on it.
But it's still, but it's still, she's still a neighbor as a resident.
Yeah. It's the same setup, just by a different name.
Yeah.
You know, it's still residents. You know, it's still residents deciding for residents.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I would rather.
I mean, I'm willing to experiment. Go, go ahead.
I, I would rather just see not neighbors, but, but paid professionals. And maybe it has to be paid for by the applicant and it has to be people that won't have a conflict of interest.
It's, it's amazing how many conflicts of interest are in these organizations. Like I can't even get someone to come be a civil engineer in my yard because they all want to work with, you know, the people next door and pack, you know, developers. Like it's very challenging to find an impartial person.
And we could, we could recruit, I mean, I, obviously Doug has particular expertise, but we could recruit somebody who knows, who has more landscaping expertise. As, as a second expert on, on these things. But again, that's going to cost us money if we do that.
Well, isn't Doug the hired expert for Chevy Chase? For the water board?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the expert already on payroll.
Well, I think that rather than take a lot of time on this, I think this can be an assignment for Matt because I'm sure that there are different models in different municipalities for this kind of decision-making. So, so rather than not have a conversation based on information, let's have assigned that to Matt. Or maybe the, 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 those experts that, that work with the committee can point us to municipalities that with, with different models for this decision-making.
All right. That sounds like a good solution.
Yeah. Sorry, I know, I know that you want to move on. Um, just one, one thought potentially would be, you know, we have, we have our aunt, we have our staff that does a report that there's some substantive review, but a large part of it is also, does it or does it not fit within the code and doing those calculations? And then on variances, perhaps we could get, you know, sort of a second opinion, like, you know, if you're, if you're going to a doctor and get a memo and, and contract, you know, do a contract with, with some other firm or individual as well that adds more context and a second set of eyes to it and all that.
But let me point at something else out in terms of this decision-making stuff. So the, the council members are elected, the, these boards would be appointed. And so it's a different kind of accountability. And that's why, for example, the county council has boards and commissions that make administrative decisions. So it takes the politics out of it. So you could have a board here where it's, it's a professional like Doug and two residents who are appointed. So, so they're only accountable to the council and the mayor, I guess, who appoints them and not to, to, to the electorate. So they would, would make decisions based on the facts and not on any kind of personal stuff.
Except that they are still neighbors in this instance, which is not necessarily the case in the county.
Oh, I.
Reality.
No, it is. No, it would be, no, all many members of boards and commissions in the county are county residents.
But statistically, every case here will be potentially a fellow small town resident, whereas at the county level, you know, the likely to encounter someone living in your particular township is a lower stick reality. So I'm just saying, I feel like we should be clear what we are solving for. If you're solving for, you know, that it's hard to be impartial. That's one problem. I think we are solving for we don't have enough expertise. We're not confident that the analysis is sound. And, and we don't want to make a decision. And so if, if you're solving for that, then I appreciate Matt's suggestion. Because it, the biggest burden is at the variance level. It might be useful to get a second opinion.
Well, I think, I think what you're, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. And that's why I say you should look at all the different models before you decide.
Agree.
All right. All right. So we can move on to 10 then without thought. And this is to do with getting a permit from the town before they get a permit from the county. In fact, I think the way we're doing it now functionally does this, the only way we can do it, which is that they come to the town before they go to the county, but we don't issue our permit until after the county has given their permit. And I think that is a requirement, isn't it?
Yes, that's in the current code. You, you can apply concurrently at the town and county level, but the town will not issue the building permit until the county permit has been issued. See, for example, the council might grant a permit with the condition that the county approve it as well before Matt hand over, Matt hands over the permit.
The county does have expertise that we don't have. So it does make sense that we listen to the county's review before we issue our final permit, in fact.
My, the only note that I had is that it may be worth Ron taking a look at the language here to update it. So we're, you know, it reflects how we want to do this in practice as opposed to as I under, as I understand it, our code right now sort of suggests that before you come before the council, you should have a county permit. And we've, we've said, that's not practical all the time, especially in these variances. So we've sort of waived that requirement, but perhaps the, perhaps it's worth specifically updating the code to.
Maybe we should formally waive that requirement then. And that's how we should interpret this recommendation so that they do come before our council first. All right. Number 11, again, we are doing this already for new construction, pre-construction informational meetings required before a town building permit application will be processed. The town manager or designated shall conduct a meeting with the applicant. And it'll be conducted for the purpose of exchanging information about the plans and the town requirements. I think we're doing that now, right?
Yep.
Let's put that on the consent one.
So, so.
We even put it anywhere.
Let me add, let me add something. So I, I do think that it's great that the applicant meets with the town staff. But one of the ideas that came out several years ago, which never sort of got implemented was that the, the applicant would also in advance of the hearing process, have the opportunity to meet with neighbors, which was the whole idea a hundred years ago, when this notice requirement was put in the law. Remember a couple of years ago when, when there was an attempt to have a meeting in advance?
Right. I do.
And, and so anyway, so I think that's an idea that I wish the council would, would think about.
Yeah. I mean, having, I've thought about it a little bit. I mean, a lot of the time, the people you're meeting with are the builders, not the owners. I mean, in other words, it, it's, I think when it's the owners, meeting the neighbors is an excellent idea. When it's the builders, I mean, it's not bad meeting the neighbors, but it isn't quite so essential.
I'm in favor of that idea. If that application is then within code and is put on the consent agenda.
Yeah. But I think the town attorney pointed out that, that applications can't be, they require a hearing. Isn't that right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes. Yeah. Currently, a hearing is required.
Well, we can revisit, revisit that. If it, an application has gone through all of this, is within code, then it's being recommended by the staff, as this is something I've brought up many times before. I think it would go a long way in incentivizing residents to stay within code if it's put on the consent agenda. But we can revisit later.
All right. We can, can we move on then? Since you're not insisting on doing this now. All right. Um, the next one is submission of results from at least four soil analyses or percolation tests, as well as the arborist assessment should be completed before the informational meeting. At the moment, the county requires one perk test or one soil test. And what the committee has discovered and what is apparent is that our soil is not frequently not uniform across our yard. So that there are more clay areas and less clay areas in the yard. And so it makes much more sense to take multiple tests from different points in the yard to get an overall assessment of the soil in the yard. And that's what they're suggesting. I would, I would just add that it shouldn't just be four soil, it should be four soil analyses from four different quadrants of the yard because shouldn't put them all next to each other. Right. Any other thoughts on that one? It, it makes a lot of sense because I mean, I can tell you in my own yard, I've got different quality soil in different parts of my front yard, let alone everywhere else. It's extraordinary. All right. Number 13, we do a review one year after the adoption related to stormwater, the town manager looks at implementation and comes back to us and says, we got problems or not, depending makes perfect sense to me. I don't think we need to change any code for that though.
Correct. I agree.
We've already changed the code. So we do a review after these are the additional changes.
Matt, Matt could, after a year after that code, tell us any problems he's had with it. Yes. All right. The next one is the kind of lobbying that Jeffrey was talking about earlier. The town should request that Maryland Department of the Environment approve for use in Maryland, any approaches for storage and or infiltration that have currently been used elsewhere successfully. And that are not in the Maryland Stormwater Design Manual. And that would involve going through legislators to get to the State Department of the Environment. I really think the issue is that manual is getting out of date. And I think we need, somebody needs to talk to them to update it and get pressure on them to update it. It came out in 2010, I think, which is 12 years ago now. Conditions have deteriorated since 2010. We get more water coming down from the skies. And interventions have improved since 2010. And they should simply update the report. So we can.
Well, that, that's something that you could bring to the MML Montgomery chapter.
Right. And I will do. Also, I think we should talk directly to our state legislature too. All right. The next one's on trees, post a list of recommended trees and the reasons for planting them. Matt says, where would we plant that? Certainly, we could emphasize the importance of canopy trees and encourage planting them in yours. Any other thoughts on that one?
Should be part of the pre-construction meeting. Whatever that packet is.
Right.
Assuming, right? That's the best point of intervention, such a recommendation.
Makes sense.
And we already, I mean, this dovetails with the tree court we updated.
Right.
It's the flip side of, we don't want trees of a certain size being removed.
It, it is, but this is the point of, of, of a new home being built. So as, I guess it's also for residents. I'll take that back. It's also for residents planting trees. It's not this.
Any lessons from the last variance hearing on the trees that we need to update the code? I'm asking myself, safe question.
Well, I, I, I sort of brought this up before, but maybe along, along these same lines, something we could consider and think about is when we're doing the stormwater ESD calculations, is there some credit that we give for planting desirable native canopy trees? And is there some penalty that we do for removing healthy canopy trees?
We, I don't know. If doing it as part of the variance justification, that if they are planting the canopy trees, but they're not making the stormwater runoff requirement, then we would allow the very, the, the planting canopy trees to contribute to a justification for variance.
I guess I'm thinking, I think, I, I took the committee's recommendation here to be some way to, to encourage proactively applicants putting together a, a plan that, that incorporates planting native canopy trees on their process. I'm very rarely do we have, you know, an applicant that says, I'm not going to do your, I'm not going to do the reforestation plan that Tolbert's recommending.
What, what I've got on the back of my mind is that the county did consider trees originally as a possibility for environmental site design. So build them in as a factor too, but decided against it in the end because the, 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 the reason is that where you plant the tree makes a difference. So if you've got grass all around the tree, it doesn't absorb so as much water as if you've got open beds, conservation landscaping around the tree, it absorbs much more water that way. And the, it was, tree absorbs most water if you've actually got that around the whole canopy off the tree. Well, nobody does. I mean, that, that, that's, you know, it just doesn't happen. So this was the tangle that the town, the, the county got into. And they said, okay, we're not going to do trees because of that. And it is true. All that's true. So on the other hand, canopy trees are good generally to have. They do absorb water even, you know, across conditions. They just don't absorb as much water when it's planted in grass and when they're planted in open landscape. So if we put it into the variance, then we are giving them credit through the variance. And that's, that would be, I think, a way to handle it.
Right. Just to be clear there, Rob, when you're saying awarding the variance is itself the credit.
Right. We're giving, right. Exactly. So trees can, can contribute to our awarding variance if they have not managed to capture all runoff from the yard. And many times they won't be able to.
I think there's a dimension here about trees in stormwater mitigation that we haven't fully captured, coming out of especially the last variance hearing. And you know, because originally the trees were going to be removed and the trees were back. A number of us, you know, made statements that the sort of, the, the sort of, you know, how long the trees have existed are part of the stormwater mitigation. Do we, how do we account for all of that? And, or have we already accounted for it? And that's not clear to me. And I apologize. I'm just thinking out loud here. If there's something missing that we need to capture coming out of that hearing. Matt, on your suggestion, I always struggle with sort of the penalty. Because you can pay and then you can cut the tree. And so we don't get the outcome.
I, I want, I, I was not necessarily referring to a monetary penalty. I was thinking more, you know, for new construction, the, as a hypothetical, you, you have the rooftop runoff, which equals a certain number of gallons that you have to retain on your site. And for every mature, healthy tree that you take down, we say that's an extra 100 gallons that you have to retain. And conversely, by planting, you know, on the flip side, by planting a native tree, we'll give you a credit of 25 gallons, something like that. Cause I.
It's the latter. It's the latter that I, I see the value in. And I'm wondering if we can capture that, that the planting contributes to mitigate, it clearly does. So how do we account for that?
Yeah. I, I mean, that's what I was saying earlier, that we don't know how much it contributes because we don't know what they're planting it in. Whether there's going to be grass around it, how much open landscaping is going to be around it. All those things matter. So it, you can, we could give them just one credit, you know, per tree. We could just say, okay, because we know it's going to do some good. We'll, we'll give them a credit. But what I'm saying is that's a sort of artificial thing. We could just accept that we don't know how good they're going to be. So let's just consider them as, as an advantage when we're considering variance.
But could you make it specific? Wouldn't there be a way to make it specific?
Well, you can make it specific, but what I'm saying is it's artificial. In other words, if you, if you give them a 25% credit, you know, for, for canopy trees or a 5% credit for canopy trees, actually. Actually, how well that tree performs is going to depend upon where it's planted.
But it's not gonna be zero. You see, that's the bottom line. So there has to be some way to come for it.
Right.
I guess I, I was thinking just more generally. How do we, uh, I I admittedly, this is, you know, a a half, a half-brained idea that's not not fleshed out. But maybe we can consider in future meetings and work sessions. Ways that we can incentivize applicants to proactively include this type of thing because. Well, a- as I said, right now, we have a tree forest, reforestation plan that the applicant almost always says, sure, I'll, and I will do that. So how how can we incentivize them to put in more trees than the re- than.
I agree, I agree.
Well, what I was saying to uh Councilor Bar before is why couldn't you be specific, require specifics on where the trees planted?
That that requires a detailed landscaping plan. If we want to do that, we can do that, yes.
That's all I'm saying, but I mean, isn't that an op- I'm just thinking, isn't that an option to require that? I don't know.
It it, I mean, if if, right, I mean, if we're gonna consider trees seriously, then we do also need to consider landscaping around the tree, and yes, we could do that, yes.
I think it's it's an incomplete picture to talk about stormwater mitigation without an only focus on systems. That's just.
We're we're we've dry wells, um, and and.
You know what I mean?
And gray gardens, um, you know, complex landscaping, bioswells, there's a lot there.
So it, the trees are a factor, you know, in in that and. To the extent.
I mean, we 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 could, as I said, we could. As Jeffrey's suggesting, write code that includes landscaping plus the tree, and then we are in better shape. The county um did not put trees in because they couldn't come up with a a standard for quantifying. What trees would do because of the landscaping problem. And the the issue is. That as it grows, so it needs more landscaping around it because the roots are growing underground and you you get in a mess. So. All right, anyway, um, I'll move on to to the next one.
Come back to later topic.
Right, yeah, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not dogmatic on it. I I love trees, you know, and and if we can get more trees, I'm all for it. Um, uh, once a year upon request, but this is, I give them a tree, uh, once a year upon request by resident, adding. Uh, adding, not replacing one or more trees in a property by giving a free tree. Wow. At Christmas, I make it a Christmas tree. No, sorry, I didn't mean that, um. It it would be obviously a canopy tree, I imagine, um. And. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I I I I can say that actually, uh, I recall that. Martin's additions and Chevy Chase section five have a program similar to this. Um, or I don't know, Ron might know if they still do. Um. I, in my experience, it was very rarely taken advantage of by by residents. The idea was that the town, the town in an effort to encourage tree planting. Would pay for the town arborist to do a consultation with residents on a good area to plant a canopy tree. As councilmember Barr suggested, um. I I I don't know that it was. A, uh, I don't know that it hurt anything, but I don't know that it necessarily had a real positive impact from my anecdotal experience.
And we, we, you know, it it, what I also suggest is that, uh, if we do that, we also give them a free consultation with the arborist. Um, in terms of where to plant the tree because that matters a lot.
This seems a little off-target recommendation, frankly. You know, maybe you can find out more, Matt, on how it meant. Uh, there, and we can come back to this.
Okay.
Okay, we we we're um. More or less run out of time. I I mean, there were, there was a recommendation not on Matt's list about forming.
Cool. I think we lost.
To, you know, if you remember, L I D C had us with thirty nine, I think.
Robin, we lost you for a second. You said the recommendation to farming, and then we lost you. Sorry.
Sorry, yes, and my connection became unstable. Uh, the idea is um. That on hills, there are generators of stormwater at the top of the hill and receivers of stormwater at the bottom of the hill. And the the best way to approach that is through a team across the hill, coming up with a shared intervention. To control the stormwater across different properties when it is apparent that that is the problem, as it is in fact in some areas in town. Um. That's kind of a big one to think about, and I wouldn't suggest we do it at the end of this meeting, so.
Sounds good.
Um, I think probably we've we've worked worked through.
Yeah.
A lot.
I I know that it's one minute from seven thirty, uh, council president Circo had to. Had to take a leave and um. But coincidentally, uh, the council has scheduled a work session on. Building code amendments, and this. Uh, is goes hand in hand with those. So, and that, to remind everyone, that meeting is on June. Uh, what is that?
Seventh, is it?
June twenty seventh.
June twenty seven. And uh, we also. Could uh discuss some of this when we're having our. Work session on. June.
Twenty first.
Decide, twenty first, yeah. So we'll take that all in consideration. All right, the council president and I put the agenda together. So thank you, everyone. This has been a very productive. Meeting and a good start on um a lot of important changes that hopefully will be made. To our code and our policies, and we will see everyone hopefully at the pool this weekend. For Memorial Day weekend, and then we'll see you for the next meeting of the council on Monday, June.
Jeffrey, when are you at the pool?
It'll be a surprise.
I I I, let me know, okay, text me, I I'll I'll be there.
It'll be a surprise if I show up.
All right.
So dinner is calling me, so bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.